Town Hall Meeting today, Tuesday, October 28. This is concerning a couple of very important issues which are on the ballot. Early voting has already started. However, make sure you vote by next Tuesday, the 4th. In any case, before we get going, I would like to have Boy Scout troop number 44 lead us in the pledge of allegiance both to the states and to Texas. First.
Scouts attention. Call drug offense. Please join me in the pledge, the American part.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great flag of our British lands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town Pledge.
Arms for Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All. Call drug offense. Turn the posts.
All. You may now be seated. Thank you. All right. Well, as I was saying, welcome to all of you to the Town Hall Meeting. The idea of this meeting is for a number of people to give a presentation about the various topics which are important for the upcoming ballot. We are open for discussion, for questions from the audience, but I do ask that everyone be on their best behavior. This is, like I said at the roundtable, it's not a trial, this is an information session. We have some submitted questions previously submitted which will be addressed. And based on Internet chatter and discussions, we've come up with four different topics which we will be discussing this evening. I will get to that eventually. But first, I would like to introduce the five people who will be speaking. First, we're going to have Dr. Jones-Bees. He's going to give just a baseline presentation of what the school bond is about. And followed by him will be Mr. Jackie Wilkins, who I don't know if he's here yet, and then Mr. John Burge, and Karen Toibert, and Larry Cooper, speaking on both the school bond issues, or either the school bond issue or the government situation, which is a strong mayor council versus the city council, city manager issue. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. John-Bees. And please hold your questions, I'll tell you what you can ask. Right now, we just need to absorb.
I appreciate this time, and there are a couple of board members, Kurt Hemmerich and Randall Morgan, in the audience. And I've got a meeting at 6:30 and a meeting at 7 o'clock, so they're going to say, and if you want to ask questions after I leave, hopefully they can answer them. And also, they have booklets with them that have artist renditionings and floor plants and stuff of what we're planning. And tonight, I want to make it real clear, one agenda went out and said that I was to speak for the bond. I can't speak for the bond or against the bond, all I can do is provide information. And so I want to make that very clear, that that's all I'm doing is providing information. We're wanting to do a $6.9 million bond, and that's what's on the ballot. And the $6.9 million bonds, two critical issues, one is growth and one is safety. Over the last two years, we've grown about 150 students, particularly at the elementary school and the high school. This year, we had significant growth at the elementary school. We added two classrooms this year, and two teachers this year. And we turned the teacher's lounge back into a classroom. We have no more classrooms, we're limited to 22 students in class, we really don't want to put more than that, as I said, we can't put more than that. And so we need more classrooms, we're expecting to have to add about two more teachers next year, and we don't have a place to put kids. And so that's the growth issue that we have. The safety issues at the elementary school, we're wanting to do two things. Number one, the new wing will be tornado rated, and be the first one in the area to be able to house kids for tornadoes. And the second thing is, currently, our elementary school doesn't have a fire sprinkler system. We would like to put a fire sprinkler in it for the safety of our kids. At the high school, what we're wanting to do is add classrooms, is our first project, including culinary arts lab and a chemistry lab. And then, for safety, what we're wanting to do is, right now, there are two entrances to the front of the building, which is confusing for visitors, and we're wanting to make one entrance. Our offices are now across the hallway, so when visitors come in, they're in the main building. And this would, we have our other two campuses that have security entrances where the offices, people have to come through the office to get to the rest of the building. That's what this would do as well, set up the high school, like the middle school, the elementary school have currently. Then, also, for safety, the new wing at the high school will be tornado rated as well. And the third project at the high school would be, we have a small cafeteria right now, we have three lunch periods for our 450 students that are at the high school, and we're trying to get capacity where it will hold about 750 to 800 students. And adding more than three lunch periods is difficult. You really can't do it, and we'd have to start serving like after breakfast, and we don't want to do that. And so we need to increase the size of the cafeteria, we need to have a security entrance, and we need to add some classrooms at the high school. So those are our projects that we have listed. Now, the $6.9 million, the next question is usually, how much will that cost me? What we've done in the last couple of years, number one, we refinanced three sets of bonds that has saved the district $200,000. That has been put to the side to pay for this upcoming bond issue. And then the second thing is, Caterpillar plant has come in, and they have $50 million worth of inventory in that plant. That has given us several hundred thousand dollars extra also that we've put to the side to pay for this bond. And so taxpayers, it's not, it's a neutral vote. Now, when you look at the ballot, it says $6.9 million and any taxes that it takes to pay for it. And what I'm telling you is, it's not going to take that and say, okay, how do I trust that? It's not going to raise taxes, you tell me that, and then you're going to raise taxes afterwards. Well, this only gives us room at the elementary school for 20% growth. We believe that that will last us about four years. And then we're going to need a new elementary school. If we raise taxes now, we're in jeopardy of not getting voter approval then. And so we're going to be very diligent about making sure we don't raise taxes. Okay? Nice, not leaving anything out. Covered. Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. There'll be some gentlemen around afterwards that can answer any of your questions.
Did Jackie Wilkins show up?
I just called his mom, she's trying to get dressed.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go to Mr. Burge, John Burge.
Jeff.
Jeff.
John's sitting here, so.
That's my daughter, that was in my head.
No worries, no worries. Welcome, I appreciate y'all being here this evening. My name is Jeff Burge, and I'm with the Vote Yes for Your Kids Committee. I apologize, but I have to cram a lot of information into five minutes, so I want to head and road out everything that I want to say, so I appreciate if you'd be patient with me as I read what I prepare. As you're already aware, Van Alstine ISD is proposing a $6.9 million bond package at no tax increase to taxpayer in order to fund projects that will accommodate growth within the district and address safety issues, namely a fire suppression system, tornado shelter certification, and a more secure front entry at our high school. The fact that the Van Alstine Independent School District is growing is just that fact. And here are the facts. While the middle school enrollment is down, this was due to an exceptionally large class moving on to the high school to be replaced by a relatively small class from the elementary. The high school, on the other hand, has seen an increase of 44 students over just the last two years, and the elementary school has increased by 59, to the point that it now exceeds its maximum capacity of 520 students. In fact, the district was forced to hire an additional first and fourth grade teacher just this year to accommodate this growth. Overall, the district saw an increase of 83 students from September 2012 to the first day of school this year, and since that time, 11 additional students have enrolled. Now consider that just this year, the city of Van Alstine has issued 36 building permits for new home construction. This figure does not include new home construction outside the city limits that fall within the school district. Additionally, there are approximately 60 lots that are currently platted in the Georgetown Heights development off Kelly Lane. Home builder D.R. Horton has already broken ground and will begin constructing new homes soon. Driscoll Hill, off of County Line Road, was platted several years ago, but was purchased in the last two weeks by a developer who has indicated to the city he is ready to begin developing the 160-plus lots. Another development just south of Georgetown has already been approved for 140 lots. Finally, 132 acres are under contract west of Van Alstine on Jim Jones Road at FM 121. The buyers have hired engineers to develop a plan, have already contacted the city for water and sewer maps. The plan is for approximately 200 lots in that development. Another strong indicator of the housing market, I'm sorry, of the housing demand in our market is that in the past, good markets and bad, Van Alstine typically has 120 to 130 homes for sale at any given time. These are resale homes only and did not include new construction. Currently, there are just over 40 homes for sale within our school district. Existing home inventory is very low, and good properties on the market are selling within a couple of weeks. The assertion that Van Alstine and the surrounding area are not experiencing growth and will not continue to do so is ludicrous. I'm sure many of you watched the news yesterday and heard the announcement that Toyota will be moving its national headquarters to Plano only 3 miles to our salary. WFAA reports, and I quote, "4,000 employees would have to relocate to North Texas." It means a lot of new cars on the road, people looking for homes, and more kids in schools in our area. I can argue that this opportunity to pass a $6.9 million bond that will accommodate growth and address safety at no tax increase is a no-brainer, and it is. If this bond were to fail, however, the district will immediately need to address the overcapacity issue at the elementary school to include portable buildings, and that is in the short term. The school board would have to explore other options, including raising taxes, which could be accomplished up to a certain amount without voter approval in order to fund these necessary projects. I realize some people welcome growth in our district while others are less excited, less than excited about it. Regardless of how you may feel about growth, the school district has an obligation to educate these children, and passing this bond is a smart way to fund these new classrooms and projects that are needed. Jonathan Weiss is a senior council at SRS Technologies and an adjunct professor at law at George Washington University, is widely quoted, he's a widely quoted author on public schools and economic development. Weiss states, quote, "Research, recent research is very clear. Schools influence economic vitality and growth. Kids learn better, behave better, and have better attitudes in new or upgraded schools." According to a National Association of Realtors report, two most important factors in selecting a relocation site are school and safety. Well-maintained facilities enhance academic performance, which in turn enhances economic growth. Research proves that quality public schools can help communities and states be more economically competitive, and the quality and size and shape of school facilities themselves affect economic development. I would encourage all of you to vote yes for this bond package and vote yes for our kids. Thank you very much.
Are you Mr. Wilkins?
It's me.
Are you ready to speak now?
Of course.
All right. Mr. Jackie Wilkins, will I speak about the school bond issue as well?
Sorry I'm late, but grandchildren issues. I'm sure many of you might have those. All right, we're looking at the, this yes for the kids. Why do we continue to use this phrase when we know this is not the case? We're installing what at the elementary? Additional classrooms? High school? We're doing the same thing? What are we doing at the middle school then? I mean, we're getting ready to build at the elementary, build at the high school, and we're going to set everybody on top of one another in the middle school, at the junior high? That just, it doesn't make sense. We're looking at fire systems, I believe is told, and also, I read a little bit on the webpage, it's saying that they're certified. Certified. So my question to the powers that be is, exactly where is this coming from? Is this coming from, we've all of a sudden found, you know, a heart and say, we need to put in fire systems for the children? Or is this something that's being mandated by the state, and we were falling short? You know, the good people of the city, and I know we're not a huge town, we're growing, that's wonderful, but ladies and gentlemen, if you're going to do something, ask, ask us the reason, and give us the real reason why. And you say, well, Jackie, why would you say something like that? Several years ago, we have a new football stadium. Everybody's excited, we're proud, it's a beautiful stadium, absolutely beautiful. It was approved by the city, it was great, wonderful, and wild. Then we come to find out that basically on the election paperwork, the wording was switched such that no meant yes, and yes meant no. So everyone feels like it was passed overwhelmingly. You had a lot of citizens basically go in, look at it, and say, we don't have the money for it? No. Well, the no meant yes, so we have a new stadium. Why? Why do we continue to try to trick individuals? Another situation, the band hall. Was in a meeting a couple of years ago, several years ago, in fact. It was approved that we build a new parking lot for the band hall. Well, that's great, we're taking care of our, our children that are in band, you know, we're showing them we care. Ladies and gentlemen, that parking lot was built west of the football stadium. It's now our home side parking lot. Guys, this got to stop. I know many of you are going to sit there and they're going to say, well, I wasn't there, I wasn't involved. Some of you were, some of you know what's happened, some of you are still approving what's happened. Say yes for the kids, but we built an elementary with no fire system. Were we thinking about the kids when we built it? But now, we want to think about it. My children went to that elementary all the way through that high school. Are we, were we worried about them then? Why are we worried about them now? Am I for the children? 110%. Like I said, I have a grandson, he's in elementary. I'm 110% for it. But again, my question is, don't sit there and use our children to try to pass something that somebody wants. Tell us what you're really doing, for real. That's all we ask. Now, we've been tricked before, we've been tricked numerous times. Stop tricking us, this is a small town. We've been family for years. There are individuals that are going to move in or have moved in that have a different agenda than what we've had for years. You know, I'm not here to make money on Van Alstine, I live here. I'm here to stay in the quiet, and be comfortable, and calm, and just not have these kind of issues. I moved from the city because of these type of issues. So, you know, my, my question is, tornado shelter, again, and I'm going to finish on this. These classrooms are built for tornado shelters. Nobody cared about the kids 10 years ago in an elementary or high school for tornado shelters. Did anybody care? Did anybody worry about when the high school was built? But now, we care. Doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense, is my timer up? Okay. So in short, I'm just basically answering the question, the powers that be. If this is something that you want to do, tell the people what you're using the money for. Okay? We were a 3A school. Last statement, I'm sorry, I will. We were a 3A school. We pushed the envelope until we could get back down to a 2A school. But when we were a 3A school, did we need extra classrooms? 3A means we had more children. But now that we have less, we need more classrooms. Thank you.
Now I'd like to call Karen Toibert, she's going to address the strong mayor versus the city council manager, Stylle Governor. Karen?
Good evening.
Okay. I'd like to start by quoting from the Government Code. It's Title V, Open Government, and it's subtitle A, Chapter 552, subchapter, subtitle A, Chapter 552, subchapter A, and the section is 552.001. And it states that, "Under the fundamental philosophy of the American constitutional form of representative government, that adheres to the principles that government is the servant and not the master of the people. It is the policy of this state that each person is entitled, unless otherwise expressly provided by law, at all times to complete information about the affairs of government and the official acts of public officials and employees. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." And this is the main thing that, that I am concerned about. Right now, we, the people, don't know what's going on in this city. We, the people, have very little say in what's going on. I believe in smaller government with freedom for its citizens. I believe in both personal and fiscal responsibility, and I believe in the rule of law. Since I believe in smaller and less restrictive government, as well as the rule of law, I'm recommending to you that you vote for a change to our government system. The debt is growing, and we are losing our personal freedoms because the city's been put in the hands of an unelected bureaucrat. We, the people, have very little say in what is happening. I want government back in the hands of the people. Right now, if we attend a city council meeting, the audience receives an agenda. However, the citizens have no idea of what is being discussed as far as what the ordinances that the council members are voting on, rate increases, how much, how little, usage fees such as parks, permits fees such as the mitigation fees, and all these things that have just been in the last few months that have come before the council. The public has no prior knowledge of these actions to be taken by council. Therefore, we, the people of Van Alstine, can't talk to our council members and express our point of view, whether we're for or against, or changes should be made or shouldn't be made. You know, examples, the closing of the railroad crossings. Now, it doesn't affect some of you people that live, you know, in other, in Georgetown or west of town, but it does affect the people on the east side of town. And there was no prior information given to any of us, whether we were on the council or not. The effort to blend the water from Lake Levon with the city well water. It was pointed out at a meeting that the original vote on that was for the people in the new, newly built area. It was not to be blended with the well water from the city. And now, you know, we have something going on where they're trying to blend it, which will destroy the infrastructure in the old part of town. And no one will listen. The sales and use tax on telecommunications services, where did that come from? All of a sudden, it comes up at the meeting, and even the council doesn't know what they're voting on, but they voted to charge us, you know, 2 cents per dollar on telecommunications services, and we don't even know which telecommunications services we're talking about. But we're going to get taxed now on that. There was a special ordinance that includes the sale of alcohol. Well, some people have spoken out about it, but we never saw the ordinance that was proposed at the meeting ahead of time so that we could express our point of view on it. Another thing was, you know, in that same ordinance was the children riding horses in city parades. Yet some of those kids are better than the adults. And, you know, it was just a real, I think, belittling type of situation because the children have control of those horses. Restrictions in the water conservation plant, the application of the Natsada Power Plant to build in the ETJ. How many people know about that or are aware of that?
10 seconds, please. Yes, 10 seconds.
10 seconds. Okay, since this is not supposed to be a dictatorship or an oligarchy, we want to participate in our government, and we are not allowed to inform that we currently have. In this day of austerity, we need to trim government, not grow it, and therefore, I encourage you to vote for abandoning the city manager form of government.
Okay, and now, Mr. Larry Cooper, Councilman, speaking at court of the council manager, Stylle Governor.
Thank you. I am glad to see everyone here. This is a great turnout of interested citizens, that's a, that's a great thing. There's no one here that we need to remind to vote, we know you're all going to vote. And whatever your opinion is on these issues, your opinion is important, and you should vote according to your conscience. We all know that progress and growth is coming to Van Alstine, it's going to come whether we want it to or not. We need a strong government team that's determined to handle the growth and shape the growth so that it benefits Van Alstine and all of its citizens. Now, the people who want to be a part of that government, they need to know that they can't be thinking of themselves as great individuals. Those people need to think of themselves as part of a team, a gear in a gearbox. Now, one indispensable part or gear in that gearbox is the city manager. He's indispensable in the planning of what's going to happen with the city, he's indispensable in maintaining the city, indispensable in executing all the plans. And we need to keep a city manager, keep a city manager for three big reasons, I think. First, we need three strong branches of government, and the checks and balances that come with three strong branches. Second, this is not a good time to be reinventing our city government. Third, Van Alstine is evolving, and its government, government needs to evolve with it. We cannot afford to take a backward step. We currently have, as I said, three distinct branches of government. We have a judicial system at our disposal, we have a city judge, and all the appellate courts that are in Sherman, appellate courts throughout the state, appellate courts throughout the nation, so we have a judicial system. We have a legislature, we have six elected members of that legislature, and I include the mayor in that because the mayor presides over city council meetings, presides over the actions of the, of the council, and on occasions, she has to vote. And she also has a power and authority to force the city council to reconsider anything that it's voted for. And so that's why I include the mayor in our, in our council. But we also have an executive branch, we have an executive branch in an unelected city manager. He's hired by a vote of the city council, he can be fired by the vote of the city council. He's qualified, full-time professional who responds to the wishes of the council, who in turn, the council in turn, needs to be responding to the wishes and the needs of the citizens. The city manager's free to advise the council, free to advise the mayor. free to advise the mayor about any laws, any ordinances that can't or don't work in behalf of the city. With his department head, he works out budgets annually. And those budgets are brought before the council and before the citizens, before they're enacted or adopted. And then, the city manager operates the city within that budget. He makes sure that the city operates within that budget. The city manager is the highest city official who actually, who's in the trenches and finds out quickly what's working and what's not. In comparison, the mayor and the city council members are unpaid, part-time volunteers. It's essential, in his place as the top executive, that the city manager have real authority over the people that he supervises. He's most effective in his place in government when he actively informs and works with the mayor and the council. And when he promotes teamwork among the people that work for him, his department heads and their staffs. He gains and maintains a comprehensive knowledge of how the city services are being administered, how well things are working through his work. As I said, he's full-time, more than 40 hours a week. And for that, he needs input from the council, and the council needs input from citizens. We need to hear your concerns and complaints. And there's nothing wrong with holding city councilwoman's feet to the fire on things. That's the way it's supposed to work. To summarize, our city council, our city government, our city government is not broken, and it doesn't need to be overhauled. We are long past the stage of growth here in Van Alstine where a part-time, strong mayor can effectively manage and operate the city. In 2003, Van Alstine decided that we should have a city manager to do those things. And they were right then, and we still need that manager. It's still the case that we need a city manager. We need the checks and balances that are afforded by having him as an executive. Now, I'm not criticizing our mayor in any of this. She's doing her job very well. She's trustworthy. But we must not invest both legislative and executive power in any one person. Can't afford to do that. That's too valuable, a check and balance. We can't do away with that. Okay, it's best to keep the heat on the council, be ready to vote out amateur council members. But continuity, the continuity of day-to-day operations in the city is best provided by having a competent city manager.
Well, thank all of you for your questions.
Wait, when I have questions, since he went over by about three minutes according to the timing, I'd like to have additional three minutes.
No, actually, he went over one minute. He was five minutes fifty-two point ninety-two seconds. You were six minutes twenty-two somewhat seconds. Anybody, can you see my phone? All right. Let me remind you, this is a chamber meeting, and I'm the president of the chamber, all right? Thank you for the question, Karen. We're going to move on to the four topics that have come up through the emails and chatter. The first one is growth and prosperity, which I believe most of the panel has already discussed fairly adequately. But let's dig a little deeper. And let's talk about, for example, cities who have the mayor, strong mayor sort of government style versus those who have the council city manager. Just, you know, brainstorming about that sort of thing. And also, let's address with the growth, a number of times, people have mentioned the newcomers. Well, the newcomers, they're here, and they're still coming. And they're going to contribute to the economy, I would assume. So let's discuss that. Growth and prosperity, specifically, the economy, how it's going to affect the city, and examples of yea or nay for the different government styles, and also the school bond issue, if you guys can think of anything. And after the panel, not the candidates, have all spoken for a couple of minutes, or three minutes if they'd like, I will be timing, we will open it up for questions from the audience, okay? So would anyone like to go first, Karen? Sure.
When we're talking about growth, I look to our north and to our south. You know, Houss is working on getting a water park, Hawaiian Falls, and a Walmart, neighborhood market, and more housing. Anna's getting, you know, has a complete shopping area and lots of housing. Gunner has a thousand homes being built, and the developer is working on building the sewer plant. But what's happening in Van Alstine in 10 years? We really haven't seen, or 11 years, we really haven't seen the growth come here. So my question is, you know, what is wrong with the form of government that we have? You know, we didn't have enough votes or points to qualify for Palladium. There's been no progress on Whole Caterpillar coming. There's so many restrictions on businesses that they don't want to come, or if they come, they close down. One comes, one goes. So as far as progress and growth, one example recently was Dr. Larry Nickel came, and he had a viable business, Ag Seal, wanting to rent his building. And what happened? The council shut them down because they wanted to move in by August 1st. And they tabled it. So we have no growth there, which would have been income to the city. You know, we have, years ago, the John Deere project that was nixed by the council and city manager. Yes, we need more rooftops, but we needed developers, we need planners, not this hodgepodge of what's going on. We need planning for growth and development, and we need it now, and we're not getting it. With the way that we have a city manager, you know, we have, like I said, an unelected bureaucrat that's not really responsive to the citizens. He's hired by, it took three council members to hire him, but it takes four to fire him and/or to remove him from office. He's supposed to be accountable to the council, but he has free rein over the affairs of the city. And as a council, if you ask a council member, which I have recently, about what a situation is in town, the answer is, go talk to the city manager. He is the only person that seems to know what's going on or what is happening in town. So I think that we have to be looking at open government that is closer to you and to me. And we can get that with a mayor who has a city administrator working for him or her doing the same duties as a city manager.
Would anyone else like to speak on that topic? Mr. Wilkins?
Speak on the...
Growth and prosperity with the schools and what they're doing. I know, we all pretty much touched on that. I just don't know if there was anything else you wanted to add? No?
Nothing, really, nothing at this time. The only statement I would like to make for, you know, again, with the bond situation and saying that it's, let me stand up here. Bond situation, saying that, you know, it's free and it's not going to cost us anything. My grandmother told me when I was little, I'm sure some of you might have known her, you don't get nothing for free. You get nothing for free. Somebody always wants something. So let's go into it with our eyes open. Yes, Van Alstine is going to grow, okay? But let's grow with our eyes open, not closed, okay? We have a football stadium, huge, fifteen billion dollar investment. We can't afford to turn the lights on. Houss is dead, is the school. I've gone to the high school. They've had the lights cut out in the high school during school. Why? We're broke. Please answer some of these questions. Instead of moving forward, we need to have a city manager. Now, we need to have people in the city government that are voted on by the people, not established or brought in and given certain authorities. But that's just me. Thank you.
Now, the growth that we're expecting, the growth that we want, is going to require the development of infrastructure. We have places where we need to push water and sewer and gas and electric so that these businesses can come in. And those plans are being made, especially, particularly, in water and sewer. There are plans to push water under 75 and over to the west side so the businesses can come in. Palladium, Whole Caterpillar, those are not done deals. Those two businesses are still looking at Van Alstine. They're not building yet, but they're still a good possibility. So that hasn't been shut down. I also want to address the building that is subleased to a person or leased to a person, a city building leased to a person who wanted to sublease it to someone who, he told us was going to produce urethane. Now, the fellow, the owner or no one that represented him came to the city council to tell us how he was going to handle this urethane, whatever toxins might be produced. That's why it was tabled. It was just the lessor. He was the only one here to talk about it. He didn't really know their business, and I don't fault him for that. That business should have had someone here to explain to us how they were going to do things. And the motion was tabled because we did not know how they were going to handle toxins produced by this urethane. And we would have welcomed, we would still welcome for that business to come in here and tell us how they're going to handle those things. And it could be very well, it could well be that he's got a plan and that we can go ahead and let that sublease go forward. But he never came to talk to us, and so that's why that happened. But the infrastructure that Van Alstine has had has been under the streets and under the ground for a long, long time. It wasn't kept up to date. And so now, we have to update that. We have to get it working better. And then, we also have to push sewer and water. We have to push infrastructure out so that we can get these businesses coming in. But there are businesses that are looking at us. And so the growth is going to occur, both in housing and in business.
Does he speak, Mr. Wilkins?
Oh, no, I think I had it. We covered the growth and prosperity and the progression, so I think we're good. I'll turn it over to the audience if they want to ask any questions.
Thank you. Well, you...
No, I don't want to mediate.
No. That's your job. Okay, at this point, we will open it up to questions from the audience, specifically about growth and prosperity, newcomers, all the things that are happening in Van Alstine right now. Do they have any questions from the audience? And you can direct them to a certain panel member or in general, and you can have each and every one answer. But your question and/or your statements are limited to one minute, please, each. Mr. Patterson?
I have one question for me.
For me?
Yes. This building here, I didn't know with different people. Sitting in a family unit, a church, it's not for rent, whatever. I wasn't aware y'all got that.
This is a town hall meeting. It's a community center.
Okay, this was built, and I think some of y'all need to go back and look what this thing was for first. It was donated land, donated building, everything. It was for the citizens of Van Alstine. Not for the city. All they put down was make sure the books and stuff was kept where nobody would pile on top of each other. It used to be, no pay at all until a person that was here thought it was too free to be free. And nobody used to have to pay nothing. But now, you got to pay for it. And it used to be a small donation, you used it. And put a $5 for a deposit. If you clean it up, you got your $5 back.
Mr. Patterson, one of the things is I want to stick to topics, first of all, with what we're discussing.
Is that this is about the building?
Well, the topic was growth and prosperity. Yeah, but in any case, this is a community event. It was in the paper, it was on the chamber website. Everyone is invited. As far as I know, we weren't charged anything. I didn't pick up the key because I have a full-time job. I didn't get home till late. Judy? We asked because it's a community meeting. Okay, I saw another hand over here about growth and prosperity.
I have a note. Well, just one point I want to make. I don't really have a question, really. But I did, in about 20 minutes today, right before the meeting, I Googled up the fastest-growing cities and came up with the annual ranking by the U.S. Census Bureau from 2013. And so, of the top 15 fastest-growing cities, only two of them have a strong mayor. The rest are a city-managed government. And then I went to the exact opposite. Fastest shrinking cities, also U.S. Census 2013. Of the 15 fastest shrinking cities, only four are city-managed. The rest are strong mayor. That's the only point I have.
Isn't there a certain population number that we have to have a city manager?
There's definitely no...
There's a note.
To know? It used to be 5,000.
5,000 in U. D. P. A. You can switch. You can switch.
Once you get, what? You want me to...
No, no, go ahead, please.
Okay. Once you get, once... We are a type A general law city. Once we get to the figure 5,001, then with the petition and with the votes of the public, we can become a home-rule city. And the big difference between the two is general law cities, the general laws of the state of Texas confine us to what we can do. And so they set a ceiling for us. Home-rule cities, the opposite is true. The laws of the state set a floor, and anything that they don't forbid, you can do it. So that's the advantage, you know, that's the big advantage of becoming a home-rule city. But 5,001, that's the figure you're looking for.
What does 5,001 mean, Larry? You can still be a city manager or a city administrator type level?
You can. You can, yeah, that's right. Once you become, once you get to 5,001, if you want to become a home-rule city, then you build a government the way you want to. You can have a mayor, you can have a city councilman, you can have a commissioner. If you can have a city manager or not, you can have auditors, you can have treasurers. You build it the way you want to.
Well, see, reading up, saying what I'm saying is because I've seen it both ways. And the guy that brought that petition around, he's dead and gone now, but he admitted we made one statement or done it. Because all we've had since we had a city manager was a problem. None but problems in more than that. And I've been here several years. A lot of people want their city manager. They just got here yesterday or the day before.
Well, and you're probably, you may not be alone in your opinion. Now, I have the, I have an opposite opinion. In my own opinion, I think it's working very well. I've worked closely with Frank, and I've enjoyed working with him. And I think that his department heads and their staffs enjoy working with him. But that's, you know, opinions. And you and I are just going to have to agree to disagree.
Well, can you tell the people how much education they had before they ever come here and started being city managers? We sent him to school, and he's still going to school. Don't you tell the people that?
Well, I believe I can. Now, I don't know which schools, I don't recall, but he has a master's degree in public administration, and he is a certified city manager.
He's a what?
A certified city manager.
We sent him to school. If he had got certification, we sent him to school. Right or wrong?
Yes, that's right. And I think it's good training, and I'm glad we have him, and I'm glad he's educated. I'm glad he is, I'm glad he's making a career of city management. And I hope we can keep him because he's marketable. I mean, if he wants to go someplace else, he can do it.
I doubt it. I doubt it.
Adam, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Oh, say if the citizens were dissatisfied with their city manager, and we can't reelect him or not reelect him in two years like we do a mayor, you know, if we don't like, what do y'all like to do to get rid of? I know it takes a three to two to hire him, but how many does it take to expel him?
Well, I'll start out this way. Your remedy is, like I said a little while ago, put the heat on the council. You know, if you're dissatisfied with the way things are going, you're angry with the city manager, put the heat on the council. And it does take a four, it takes a four of the five to vote him out. Now, depending on how much trouble you might be causing, how many things you're upset about, it may not be hard to get four of the five.
Well, okay, let's just say, for instance, you know, when it looks to us, like the city council, really, you know, most of you live in one neighborhood, and the guy... and the guy seems to be working mainly for that neighborhood, and say, with the railroad crossings, for example. I know for a fact that the correct procedures were not followed. I talked to the railroad guy myself in person. He told me, I sit at that office, me and your city manager, your press works director, which, in conjunction, we decided then with the railroad crossings, best we want to close.
Well, I wasn't in that conversation, I don't know what he said.
So, you haven't know that?
Well, sir, I've seen emails, and I've heard differently about that conversation. And from what I know, Frank Baker did not want those shutdowns. He tried to keep them open, but finally did get Austin's.
You got the email? Show them the email.
Oh, sir, I don't.
Guys, we are doing the five minutes on each topic afterwards. We have enough. Anyway, so guys, let's take it up afterwards.
Can I make a comment at this point?
Absolutely.
Okay, in the emails that are being referenced there, it's our plan, our conversation, and it was pre-planned. Now, I was on the council at the time. It was after 5:00 on a Thursday evening, when we were notified that the crossings would be closed the next morning. And there was pre-planning, it was, well, there were discussions before that, or we wouldn't have this. It came back that Tech Dot, Mr. Pocket from Tech Dot, came and pointed out that they were closed incorrectly, they should be reopened, and that there could be fines if they're not reopened. And because the petition wasn't going around at that time, it was ignored. But there is a petition right now to get these reopened, because it was not done properly.
And anybody, one story, anybody.
This is it, though, Mr. Patterson.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Draw the line.
I'll make one statement. If it was done right, don't you think the citizens should have had something to do with it? Two or three public carriers, that's where your thing is. Then the city council should have voted on it, it's closed. He closed it by his, he told me a lie up there Saturday, he didn't have nothing to do with. I made a lie.
But let's move on to the next subject. And let's, the next round, let's stay on the subject. This subject is checks and balances. And it has to do with government more than the school bond issue.
I have one filler question, or what to go with what we were previously discussing.
Growth and prosperity, I hope?
Growth and prosperity.
Well, you know what, we've already moved on to the other subjects. We'll have a little recap at the end, how's that? Okay, next subject is checks and balances, we're on a little schedule here. How do we apply the concept of checks and balances to the two various government forms that are on the ballot this year? Because, as Mr. Cooper has already mentioned, our country was formed with three different branches of government. And how is that different with the strong mayor government style versus city council, city manager style of government? Karen, would you like to come in?
No, I'd like to have Larry start, so that I can counter.
Well, okay, sounds good. Larry, you up for that?
Well, I spoke some about this already, but, well, we try to mimic here in the city. I think most governments try to mimic what we're doing nationally with the three branches of government and the checks and balances that they provide. And I think your question may be, how does the city manager affect the checks and balances? And the main way he can do that is like any executive. He can go back to the legislature, and he can say, hey, look, you know, you passed this ordinance, we can't enforce this, this is not fair. He might say, you know, this is unconstitutional in the U.S. Constitution. He might say this is unconstitutional in the Texas state constitution, or it's just not right, and we can't really do this. Then the city council is going to have to reconsider. And so, that's where he fits in. Now, under a strong mayor form of government, the mayor, she is not the legislature, because you still have a council, but she presides over the legislature. And in this town, she prepares the agenda that we use for city council meetings. She prepares the whole thing, start to finish, based on whatever input she gets from citizens or from councilmen. But, and so, and because she can vote with the council at times, if there's a time, and because she can make the council reconsider, then she's also a part of the legislature. And if you make her also the executive, then you eliminate a check and balance that I think is very valuable.
So, are you saying that the one then would be checking the mayor? Is that how you're?
Well, the mayor would have two different branches and depths. We've done away, I mean, the council and the mayor could have face-offs, I suppose. But you've eliminated a city manager who can say, who can tell the council and the mayor, we can't enforce this.
Where do the checks and balances go as far as the city manager then?
Well, I thought, he works at the pleasure of the council. He can't do anything without the council allowing him to do it. He works under state law, he works under city ordinances, he works for the council. He's hired by the council, fired by the council.
And he's a certified, is that what you said previously, I'm sorry?
Yes, he's certified.
Certified?
Yes. Beyond his master's degree, he's received a certification in city management.
Okay, when he was hired, was he certified?
No, he was not. He didn't even have his college degree at that point.
Well, he's certified now, and he's got a master's degree.
He's certified from where?
I forget the name of the school. It's a Texas school.
Has anybody checked on the certification?
It's not a Texas.
I mean, I'm not doing any disagreement, and it goes back to what was previously said. I agree, but the bottom line is, he's certified, but we don't know from where.
Normally, a certification comes with taking an exam. I used to be a certified music therapist, I'm a certified EEG technician. You take a state administrator's exam, and that's the only way you can call yourself certified.
I didn't bring his resume with me.
I assume that's the same thing. Okay, Karen, are you ready to rebut?
Sure.
There is a misunderstanding being put forward tonight, and that is that a city manager is the only way to go. A city administrator has the exact same qualifications as a city manager. The only difference is who the person works for. A city administrator works for the mayor, who we elect. And we have a hands-on with the mayor. A city manager works for the council. And if you look at it, it takes how many cycles to get rid of the council if you don't like what they're doing? At least two cycles, or four years, to get rid of an undesirable person. It would, I can't imagine what they would use to hire or fire the city manager, this particular council. So, the requirements are the same. The big difference is who they work for, and it's more hands-on. So, we have an executive branch, we have a legislative branch, which is the council, and like Larry mentioned, a judicial branch. We have the city attorney and all the courts and judges. So, we still have a form of government that is representative of the United States of America. Now, as far as the checks and balances, where do we get in? Where do you and I get in? We don't get the information. We don't know what's coming on the council, we get an agenda, but we don't know what the ordinance are, we can't see them in advance. We can't see what the rate increases are in many instances, or what the mitigation fees will be, or what these different things are. We sit in the audience and find out about it first, then and there, and have no time to contact our council members, and either be for or against the issue, to talk with them, to discuss our point of view. That is lacking in today's Van Alstine city government. So, that's where we have to go back. Mayor's closer to the people, there's more interaction between the citizens and the government with a strong mayor. And the railroad crossing is a perfect example. What we need is a council that is divided into wards. This way, all the people in town would be represented equally, instead of all coming from one neighborhood.
Is my time on?
Oh, good, okay. So anyhow, as far as the city manager, like I said, he's an unelected bureaucrat, not responsible for the people. Right now, we have taxation with representation, instead of taxation without representation.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience, comments?
Now, the city manager can get fired, correct? By a vote of the council?
I believe so.
If you have a strong mayor, can the council fire the mayor?
No, because she likes him.
So, they have a way to come on.
But for, you say for a council, like you got one council that lives in one neighborhood? As long as you got two of the guys staying in the same neighborhood, the lack of that, you got to have three, four, or you got five councils. As long as two councils stand alive, and they stand in council, it's the same.
So, what one is, if the city or council don't have it with the city manager, we can replace that person, but if he has a strong mayor, if we're unhappy with the mayor, we're stuck with that person until re-election, correct?
No, because the mayor can fire the city manager on the input from.
No, he's talking about getting rid of the mayor.
That's election. But it's the same thing with council. The council members have to be elected every year.
Okay, there's a question, everybody keeps talking about the mayor. I've lived in a lot of towns, doing native career, my husband. And when we lived in small towns, and there was a mayor, the last one ended up in federal prison, because of all that he could do behind the scenes. And he wasn't educated. I can't hear over here, so.
Do you understand what I'm asking is, everybody's, or who are so, I guess, an educated, well-rounded person whose everyday job is to do the best for the town, to represent it. The mayor is popular, or more popular than the person opposed him to. They don't necessarily have to have the education, nor the wherewithal to find out what to do with the city, because they're part-time volunteers, is that what I'm hearing tonight?
City administrator.
The city administrator is hired and is educated, has the same educational requirements as a city manager. And the.
This is great, interesting discussion, and I need to, but let's make sure. I'm sorry, wait.
The city manager, or the city mayor in that situation, just manages.
The administrators. Correct. They're going to go against the law. Just telecombiating.
Rather than having two things that we have to consider tonight, whether we like or dislike the city manager. We might get another one that's better, we might get one that's worse. But my thought, I came here tonight trying to get a good outlook on what I need to look at and how I need to vote. But what I'm basically hearing is that people dislike the current city manager, so therefore, we need to abolish that form of government, because it's that person, it's not necessarily the side of the government. Now, can I comment on that? That is not the fact, like has been stated. We have had a city manager form of government since February of 2003. We have gone into debt through this period of time, higher than ever when we were under a city administrator with a strong mayor form of government. It's not the personality.
That's not, I'm sorry.
It's not the person, it is the form of government, and the fact that.
That is not the issue that John put forward. You were on council.
You were.
Did you make full disclosure?
You were part of that.
Were you seeing the full disclosure?
You were there, saw everything.
I was part of the problem.
Okay, let's jump back to like, what is your answer for us being, okay? That'd be good.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the individual, it's the form of government that we want to replace.
Okay, and right now, we're moving on to topic number three, which is. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, yeah.
So, if we have a city manager with a city council, the city council, anytime, with a four-to-one vote, can get rid of the city manager if we don't like him? Correct? That's correct. We have a city mayor, a strong mayor, we have to wait two years to vote them out. We cannot get rid of them as soon as we want to, no matter what, no hypotheticals. It'll take two years. City manager can get rid of them immediately, as long as the city council votes on it, we voted for. City manager, we have to wait two years, and they can do whatever they want for those two years. I just want to picture that.
That's not the.
That's the city manager. Right, correct.
The mayor?
And that's, using it, I'm talking about execs.
I'm talking execs.
Yes, execs. City mayors are mayors there for two years. City manager can be gone tomorrow, as long as the council votes them out, then.
But it's almost impossible.
But that's it.
Emily, she had a question.
That's, you're all talking about.
Mr. Patterson?
We're talking about this, and you're talking about the personality, not the position.
Jeff is talking, all right?
It's a day, but I did it. But without the personality, without the kids. City manager can be voted out the next day, mayor takes two years.
Correct.
That's all I wanted to say.
Next topic, city administrator could be fired immediately.
But the mayor is the one to be fired, correct? And they bring who they want, and then that person does their job, correct? So, again, mayor's still a company.
All right, that's it, Karen, please have a seat.
What form of government is Anna?
I'm sorry?
What form of government is Anna?
Anna, I don't. I don't claim it was a city manager.
They're also a home rule city, with a city man. They have, they're a home city, but they chose to have a mayor, council, and city manager.
Can I just make one point? Is the city administrator optional, or is it mandatory?
It's not mandatory.
Okay, just while you're going. So, you don't have to have.
Don't have to.
But you plan, so the mayor can have all the.
Okay, Cam Russell's.
I have a question. On the same subject, it's a little bit off.
Well, that's an interesting question to defend.
My question is, when you, when you talk about having a strong mayor versus a weak mayor, you're talking about putting an administrator in place, where does the financial part actually end? So, you're talking about, from what I've read, that the mayor gets an increasing pay and your paying the administrator to do that. Wait, 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 I listen, I step back here quietly and listen to everybody else. So, I'm just, let me finish my question. Versus, you have a city, you have a ma, I mean, a city manager and a city council who's all the two. So, financially, my question is, where, what is the difference? What is the comparison, without going?
Actually, that is my next topic. I was trying to work my way into finances. Thank you for that segue. Finances, this concerns salaries, tax increases or not, benefits for the city officials, and the per capita debt. There have been some numbers floating around, which may or may not be accurate. So, we need to get those facts, as Nick Becker was asking for. And I'm going to open that up, I guess, to Mr. Wilkins and Karen and Larry, whomever would like to go first. Three minutes, please, guys, hold your questions to the end. And then I'm going to limit it to five questions, and one minute each for question or comment. Okay. Anyone like to speak on finances?
Hey, we're discussing finances for the city.
Can I ask one real quick question, just to clarify something, so I understand? How, everybody that's up talking, what is everybody's background? I know Larry Cooper is an attorney. Could you hit on this in the beginning, because if you did, I missed it.
I think I assumed everyone knew, so. And Mr. Cooper is an attorney, Karen is a retired lieutenant colonel from the Air Force, and Mr. Wilkins, hi, I haven't even met you, I wonder. I don't know, I just met him tonight, and who are you?
Jackie Wilkins, I'm an electrical engineer, I have a master's in electrical engineering and software processing. I've also, I have my own consulting firm that I utilize. My question, again, concerning salary, did everyone say position? Okay, let's say we're going to have a city manager. If everyone will say position, okay, let's say we're going to have a city manager. Okay, that's great. But he's certified? That is the problem. I mean, I know you say he has a master's in public, whatever, but he's, he's a certified city manager. My question to everybody is, I stand before you now, I am certified as a doctor. How many of you coming to my office? Anybody?
Doctors have a certification, they have a degree. I don't know what you're talking about.
How is that relevant to finances, which is what we're talking about?
Yes, we need to stay on the topic.
Okay, we're going to, I'm trying, if you let me go, let me lead into it. Okay, we're saying he's certified. So we pay him like he's received a certification, or like the young lady said previously, or he has attained a degree. How do we pay him? There has to be a scale. You know, he's not paid for his master's or whatever the other is. He's paid because he is a city administrator, but he has a certification.
It has to be certified by the state or some entity. If that's what you're asking, you need to ask for him to know that answer.
Well, again...
Unless they want. I don't understand why you keep saying that, like a certification. I'm sorry to be interrupting.
Oh, not a problem. But I, I know what you're saying about certification, but it's not a degree certification.
That has nothing to do with it. You know, about a year ago, you're a certified doctor.
A degree. He has a degree, but it has nothing to do with...
It's public administration. It does have...
It does have...
He has a master's. I think he has a master's, from what I understand, a master's in public administration, which is to be a city manager or as many city managers. That's what I understand.
Yeah, see, here's the thing, we're all saying, I believe, I think, he's not here.
Have you researched the answer to your questions?
Well, basically, I'm, I'm asking questions. See, I'm not here to say yes, no, or whatever. I'm here to basically ask questions for everybody to think. Think, I mean...
Well, actually, on my panel, you're supposed to be answering the questions.
Yeah.
In order, but I understand what you're saying, but in order to answer the questions, we have to have the individual here. Like, are we just going to say, we think you're right?
Well, we don't have his resume right now.
We don't have him!
This is a town hall meeting about issues, it's not about Frank Baker.
Okay.
It's about the city government, okay? We are going to stick to the city government issues, and you have about 20 seconds left to comment on finance.
Did you say you didn't even know his name? You said you didn't even know his name.
Frank, have I related?
I don't know.
Well, then, how can you have this big problem if somebody not even knows?
How was he hired? Did everybody view was hired?
You should have those answers.
Okay.
Okay, Larry, would you like to talk about finances? I'm sorry? Yeah, we're talking about finances and salaries, tax increases, benefits, per capita debt, things like that. What is, what are the accurate numbers?
Okay, yes.
Now, he was hired in 2003, and that's Frank Baker, the city manager. He was hired to be a city manager.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. A lot of chatter.
Oh, I'm sorry to call you. Well, Frank Baker was hired in 2003 to be a city manager, and I wasn't a part of the hiring process. I have seen his resume, but I didn't really deal with it.
2003?
I didn't rate it.
No, he was, he was, no, he became a city manager in 2003.
No, we don't.
Or maybe...
That's what the government was trying to say, city manager.
Okay. Oh, that's right, okay. And it's, so it's more like, well, now, now I'm sorry. I, I forget what year he was hired, but you're, you're correct, he wasn't hired in 2003.
But you said, he said no.
It was interim, I think, in 2010, and...
You told me.
Okay.
Laura, how do you prepare a manager?
Yeah, he has, he's been a fire manager, fire chief. But, and, and city managers get paid more than city administrators typically. A city manager, I, I think I described his position pretty well. He can fire and hire, or hire a city personnel, people that work for him, the different departments, fire, EMS, the library, his, his own advance staff. He can hire, and public works, of course. So he supervises a number of people. A typical city administrator is, is the department head for just...
Why change from city manager to city administrator? Is it strictly because of the mayor, more money, more power? Or, I mean, if there's a real problem with the issues, the job, the city manager is performing right now, it's like changing an apple, a red apple from green apple. It's like the same profession, but for lesser pay.
For lesser pay.
Mayor.
And being closer to the people.
And, okay.
Closer to people with the mayor.
Let me take a little poll there. Has anyone ever tried to beat with Frank Baker and successfully?
If anybody ever got Frank Baker...
Anybody ever been able to...
Do you think this happened with... This, this right here is a lady right here, you talk to her like a dog. This lady right here, frankly, you need to talk to her.
Oh, really?
Well, you know, everyone has their moments, Mr. Patterson. I'm sure everyone has their moments. I've heard stories of all of them. But that's not the issue. The issue is here, this is a very important issue for the city of Van, Van Alstine, and it's changing the government, it's changing all of our lifestyles, it's also changing a number of other people's personal lifestyles, and we better take it very seriously.
I'll take it.
We're, we're not only addressing the city manager, we're addressing the fire department, the police department, a number of other issues that haven't been brought up tonight, and I don't know if we have that kind of time, but it's not just, it shouldn't just be a vendetta, it should be honest thinking, conversation, let's discuss this, let's speak to the facts, let's not embellish, let's not create something that isn't there, those smoke screens, let's be honest. We are all neighbors, some of us friends, some of us acquaintances, some of us not so much either one or the other, but we all live here together.
You're opening the door, I think, to bring back the wild, wild west. I mean, basically, you're going to have a town without a police force and a fire department. Come on, think about it for a minute.
We're only talking about saving 30,000. That's not the issue.
Oh, it's been Alstine for 150 years.
Excuse me, Adam, I'm talking.
Adam, don't make me insult Adam.
So, in order to make savings, which apparently lead this change of government from, it's not going to come from changing how much we pay the city administrator or the city manager. So let's really look at the issue. Where will the money savings be coming from? That's what I want to hear tonight. We've heard a lot about changing the form of the government, we've heard nothing about where you see the savings being made. Nothing. And that's what I think we need to hear.
Highlighted by the fact, nobody in here knows what it is.
I tell you right now, right here, 6.2.
What?
6.2.
6.2?
Total city budget is 6.2.
6.00, 6.011142, 7.8.
So 6 million and change, that means the $30,000 difference on the high side that we're talking about, theoretical savings, is less than like 0.1% of the budget. We couldn't save that much money if everybody in here just came up with a new idea, that would have already saved. Do you live in town facing a...
I'm sorry? I'll tell you what, let's, let's try to wrap it up a little bit, guys. We'll give, we'll give Larry and Karen both little, we'll give you two, three minutes, and then we can just...
How many businesses do you own in town?
Excuse me, Mr. Patterson and, and who, Mr. Budgie mean? We're going to have a two-minute wrap-up. I'll give you three minutes each. Karen, if you'd like to go first? And then we can just fill it out and exchange ideas, kind of what you've been doing all But let's, let's let Karen give a three-minute recap, and then followed by Mr. Cooper. I'll answer your question in a minute, she's asking us to...
Okay, so to finalize my thoughts on this, is that we are, I am concerned, and many of the people who have signed a petition to do this are concerned about the runaway expenses in the city, and you're talking about expenses. We are, just since April of this year, we have added a lot of money to the, to debt to the city. It's up to 17, with principal and interest, it's up to over $17 million, which means that you and I, who live in the city and pay taxes, have a debt of over $5,800, and I think around $37, $38. So if you think about like a neighboring town of Westminster that went bankrupt and is now the ward of state, and the kids have to go to the Anna School District, or you look at some of the towns like Stockton, California, where they went bankrupt, and there are many instances right now where funds are tight and the cities can't pay back the benefits and the taxes and the retirement and this. We have a growing debt problem. It's spend and spend and spend some more. And so my concern with this is that we are out of control as far as the expenses go. We can stop that if we would have someone who is truly interested and knowledgeable about how to cut expenses and make city work. And we have not had that for the last 10, 11 years. We've had people who, like I said, roll over the debt, roll over the bond issues, spend, you know, we wonder where, like $10,000 went one year. There's just a lot of questions then. I know when I got on council, we did have to pony up with $10,000 to put into the police seizure fund because it, $10,000 disappeared. Now, that wasn't Frank Baker, that was prior Frank. I'm talking about an 11-year period where we have tried a city managed form of government, and it has not been to the city's advantage. We are not better off for it. And therefore, I strongly encourage you to go to a city administrator where you and I have much more contact and control and can oversee better than we currently have. So that is my request.
Thank you, Karen.
I'd like to clear a couple of things up. I've spoken with Joe Shepherd, who is the city administrator for Howe, and it's a court that he's called the city administrator. The difference between a strong mayor and a weak mayor is a city administrator. If you don't have a city, or a city manager, if you don't have a city manager, then you have a strong mayor. If you do hire a city manager, then you have a weak mayor, because the city manager takes over the administrative, managerial duties of the city. Now, in Howe, things are a little funny. They have a weak mayor. I talked with Joe Shepherd, they have a weak mayor. Joe Shepherd is paid $70,000 base salary plus change every year, and then there's, there's health insurance, there's...
Your car.
Benefits.
Well, yeah, the benefits, pension, all of those. So, but, but his base pay is 70,000. But he functions as a city manager. He, he supervises 11 people up there. It's just a court that they still call him administrator, he's a manager. So I just wanted to clear that up. Also, as far as qualifications for managers or administrators, the qualifications that have been listed, they're purely speculative. It's, it's a competitive process. Becoming either an administrator or a manager is a competitive process. You have people who apply for that job, and then city councils or a mayor, if she's going to hire, if the mayor is going to hire a city administrator, which doesn't have to happen, but she can, she's going to, she's going to get the best she can for her money. We don't know what qualifications that person might have, if, if we get a city administrator, we don't know who's going to apply or what qualifications. And the same thing happened, I imagine, when Frank Baker applied. I'm sure there were a number of applicants, and the, the application for review, the qualifications checked over, and we got the best we could for our money. Personally, I'm satisfied that he is dedicated to the city and is doing a good job. I'm happy with the job he's doing. Now, the money that we're talking about, our debt has jumped up, and we have borrowed money, and we have sold bonds. The reason for it, though, is because we have to develop our infrastructure, both the old and now we have to have the new. Our infrastructure, whatever savings this city was, was getting earlier than this, a lot of it came from letting the infrastructure run down. And so now, it's, it's, it's going to have to be maintained and built back up. So that's going to, we're paying that cost now. And then we want to further develop, and the development is for the future of Van Alstine. We want more businesses, we want more houses. We're getting houses, and we're, we're getting some businesses, not as quickly as folks want, but we have to get the infrastructure out there first, then we'll get the business, and Van Alstine's going to grow.
Well, guys, we've been here an hour and 45 minutes. I think you're highly productive. Thank you all for coming. Before we, we exit or we hang around and chit chat, so we'll do some more, Brenda McDonald, the former president of the Chamber of Commerce, would just like to say a few couple of words. Thank you, McDonald.
I didn't come here to speak, but I, I have to. I just have to, because I came here and took that. And I've watched this little town grow. I've been here for 14 years now. It means a lot to me. I have my kids here, I have my grandkids, I have six grandkids here. And yes, the schools are important to me. And yes, for tornado shelter. Every time it's in season for tornadoes, I sit in my house and go, oh my God, my kids are at school, my grandkids are at school. It is important to me. Am I going to depend on these buildings to take care of them? No. All it takes is one tornado, and you need to go, oh my God, I wish we'd done that. Right? Am I right?
Yes.
Let's not make this personal, guys. I've been here for 14 years, and this little thing that keeps underlying in this town is what's kept this town from growing. I do, I have a business in Anna, and I have a business here. My husband's a CPA here in town. I have the pawn shop in Anna, Texas. Little town was so easy to work with. They are so warm and loving to bring in people, they work with people. I never came across anything like this in ever in my life in a little town. Because if we can't work together and quit making it, oh, this part of town does this, if this part of town does that, we won't ever get anywhere, people. I mean, seriously, this has to stop. Everybody needs to totally stop. And let's work together. When I was on the chamber, it was so important to me. I served out with several enemies, and we became the best of friends before it was over with. And we still are friends. And I want to be friends with everybody. And I want this town to nourish each other, each other's businesses, take into consideration other people's feelings. Our city manager is a good city manager. I don't feel like I say as he is, he's doing his best. You know what? He may not have the best education in the world, but there's a lot of billionaires in this world that didn't have a, didn't graduate from high school. Okay? You don't have to be, he's a good people person, he knows how to work with people. And I'll take that any day over your education, because that's what it comes down to. Please stop the attacks on each other. Let's not make this personal, please. I don't have anything against anybody in this home room, but I'm tired. I moved two years ago to go back to McKinney because I was tired of the fight, you know? Well, I came back a year and a half later because I think there's work unfinished here. I really did. And I think you're all good people, and I think you're all smart people. And I think you're all good people, and I think you're all smart people, but let's don't make it personal, alright? We're, okay, our city manager, if we did pay for his schooling, we're invested in him, do we wanna get rid of him after we did that? We're invested in this person, and he's a good man, he really, I don't care what, what he says, Frank Baker's a good man, and he tries really hard for the city, he cares about the city, which is like, you know, and you can laugh, and you can smirk, and you think it's better.
In this town?
Sir?
Live here in this town?
No, sir, I have a business here in this town.
No, no, you live in this town, pay taxes in this town.
Pay a bunch of them. I pay a bunch of them.
But do you live in this town?
No, but we pay taxes.
Everybody come here, we're up here.
We pay taxes.
I pay taxes with no representation here. Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, I don't get to say so, I can't vote.
No, I'm...
But I think...
I don't listen to her, I don't know about y'all, but I would really like to listen to what she has to say, and I don't care about lying.
I just, and that's what it comes to him, to, you, they give a lot of...
I don't want you to start, now, just let me know.
Don't play that card.
Thirty-four, so bring out what town you're from, then.
Don't play that card, don't play that card. So, I just want, I want us to work together. We've got a lovely town, we've got a lot of good people, and we have people that would like to come into this town, but we can't put a lot of businesses into this town because of our infrastructure, because nobody's worked on it, and now Frank Baker is trying to work on it, he's trying to make it so we can get businesses into this town. Anna's flourishing, yes, they are, because we can't, we can't provide for businesses, a lot of them, but we will, it will work towards it. I don't wanna be that town that's like that, it just sounds like that a lot about our government, and I don't mind that, that didn't make me cry, it's been anyway, I just want you to know, guys, if we could work together, we could accomplish a lot.
Thank you all for coming, please do not forget to vote, whichever way you're, you're leading, just make sure you vote, and early voting, early voting, and I think we'll be in the next Tuesday, so make sure you're there. Right now, the early voting is at the college, and unless you're, it's gonna be at city hall. And please don't forget to get any more, any further questions or follow-up, please don't forget to go into the council.